Good evening. It did not look like we all came to order, so good evening. I'm Laura Wondolowski. I am the new city council president and I am hoping for some grace tonight because this is my first rodeo. It is 6:32 and welcome to the meeting. Welcome to everybody. I want to remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded by the city council and GCTV9. If any persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. Okay, nobody else is recording? Thank you all. All right, so we will get started. We have one councillor who is remote this evening and that is councillor Healy. And we'll do a roll call. Councillor Gold? Here. Councillor Gordon? Here. Councillor Mastertutaro?
Here.
Councillor Bottomley is absent. Councillor Bullock?
Here.
Councillor Gilmore is also absent. Councillor Perry?
Here.
Councillor Healy?
Here.
Councillor Brown?
Here.
Vice President Garrett?
Here.
Councillor Minhos?
Here.
Councillor Toronto?
I'm here.
President Wondolowski?
Here.
Madam President, you have a call. Thank you. Our next order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, which is voluntary. Our next order of business is the approval of the December 18th, 2024 city council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion? Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will take a roll call. Councillor Gold?
Yes.
Councillor Gordon?
Yes.
Councillor Mastertutaro? Oh, sorry. Councillor Bullock?
Yes.
Councillor Perry?
Yes.
Councillor Healy?
Yes.
Councillor Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Garrett?
Yes.
Councillor Minhos?
Yes.
Councillor Toronto?
Yep.
Councillor, President Wondolowski? Yes. The motion passes. Thank you. Our next order of business is communications from the superintendent of schools and the school committee, so I'd like to invite them up if they're here.
Hi, are you here on board tonight?
Hey Glenn.
No. And just so you all know, we're not seeing visual from John Zahn. But, um, so the first I'll take, which is just that we also had our organization meeting this year. I was honored to be reelected as chair. I think with an eye towards developing school committee leadership for the future. Member Stacy Sexton was elected as vice chair and Elizabeth Deneet continues as secretary. And we all continue to look forward to working closely with you to have the best schools possible in Greenfield. And with that, I'll pass it to Karen.
Thanks Glenn. Just want to congratulate President Wondolowski and Vice President Garrett. Look forward to working with you both. I just wanted to update all of you on the business manager hiring process. The school committee voted to post for the position, which was posted last Friday. We have sent it out to MESS, MASC, Masbun. It's located on School Spring and Indeed. We have formed an interview committee, which consists of myself, the assistant superintendent, the director of people services, our assistant business manager and our payroll manager. Accountable manager, I apologize. And we have January 28th and 29th reserved for first round. So we're hoping to get a pool of applicants that we can vet and then have those first round interviews in two weeks. And hopefully we will find a full-time business manager. So we're looking forward to engaging in the start of the process.
Thank you for your update. Do we have any questions from the council? Seeing councillor Perry first.
Superintendent, can you tell us anything about the PowerSchool breach that happened last week?
So let me see. What I know so far is ongoing with the PowerSchool. We have what is called a rep that contacts us every time new information. They're not sure of what information actually was breached. Their system was hacked apparently. I sent out an updated info to our staff and students and families tonight. From what we know is that they're still investigating how far that breach actually infiltrated PowerSchool itself. We don't know if any of our information actually was exposed. They have webinars and updates each day, so our IT director, Ian Edwards, is on those. And we continue to inform people as we get informed from PowerSchool.
Do you have any knowledge why some of the area schools in the district gave, sent out a different type of message? And they listed what they thought was hijacked. They listed names, dates, photos, bus routes, photos. So some, I got a couple of emails from people concerned that they didn't feel they were getting all the information that other school districts were.
If you'd love to share those school districts, like I said, they assigned someone to Greenfield. And we've just been working with our service rep, as they call them, for our particular information. So we've been on all of the webinars that local folks have been on as well. And then we've had contact with our service rep. So all I, all I can speak to is the information that I'm receiving from our PowerSchool contact. But I'm certainly happy to look into it if you have other districts that you think have been getting better or more information than we are not.
Well, someone sent me a attachment that Hadley School listed all the stuff I just mentioned. So Hadley School was one of the districts that gave out more information.
And I'm happy to reach out to that superintendent and find out if there's additional contacts that I'm unaware of. But as I said, our director of IT is on it every day. And as we get information about Greenfield, we've been sharing it with our families and our staff.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councillor Toronto?
Yeah, I just was inquiring about, about some folks reached out previously. And I told them to kind of wait and see what happened with some of the changes that were at the beginning of the school year with, as you know, I had brought up about class sizes and such before. And then there were some, there was some shuffling around the elementary schools. Have the, to keep the class sizes down, have the hiring issues that were going on with some of the moves been taken care of at this point? I was, I was asking people, they were reaching out. And I said, just be patient because obviously if you're, if you're moving around and you're trying to hire folks after the school year started or at the very beginning of the school year as opposed to prior to, it might be a little bit more challenging to fill those positions. And I know that at least one kindergarten had been filled and then I believe that person either left. I don't know the circumstances of the, you know, the personnel. But I was just wondering if those have been now remedied where every class has a teacher and is not being just subbed in by aides? I guess is my question. Is that, is that correct across our elementary schools? That every classroom has an actual teacher and it's not being subbed throughout?
Well, with regards to the sections that were reopened for kindergarten, they are all staffed by a certified teacher currently. Obviously, some personnel issues I can't discuss. So there are some instances where if a teacher is absent, we do have to utilize our instructional assistance to cover those classrooms. But currently, all of those classrooms have a certified teacher. We are still short-staffed with instructional assistance, so we are still looking for those. We have put ads in the recorder. We've just partnered with GCC and their para-pipeline. So we hopefully will have a cohort of nine folks that are going to go through the para-pipeline at GCC that will be directly hired by us. So that begins under a collaboration that we just connected with them. But we certainly could use additional instructional assistance in some classrooms and in some of those kindergartens, I believe. The one at Newton still needs one, as well as a second grade at Newton. But we do have other positions available because we are constantly searching for staff.
Cool, thank you. I appreciate that. It's good to know. The, yeah, you answered the question that as, there is a teacher in, a certified teacher in every classroom now. So that's, that's great news. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Garrett?
Thank you for, both of you, for coming to this meeting and answering our questions and for your presentation. As we are heading into the next couple of months, we are going to be heading into budget season. And I remember that the chair of your finance committee came and gave us a very helpful calendar, kind of saying some of the dates that your financial decisions were going to be made or discussed. And I know one of the first ones on it, and I don't have it in front of me. It's either January, February, or March. The superintendent comes up with a presentation on a proposed budget. And I would just like to request that that presentation and any other sort of information about the school's budgets be given for informational reasons to the Ways and Means Committee, just so we can kind of keep an eye, you know, keep ourselves informed about what's going on with the school's budgets as they're being formed. If I could, real quick. President?
Sure.
I just wanted to speak to that because I did get, I did receive an email correspondence as chair of Ways and Means. That included yourself and, and recently, this is all very recent. And I was contacted earlier today by Kate, if she's listening. Yes, I will give you a call back. I didn't have time in the 20 minutes between work and getting over here. But I will definitely reach out because there has been, you know, the branch put out there to, to collaborate on the, with the school's finance committee and to Ways and Means. So that's, it's really great to have that. And I really appreciate it. But I hadn't had a chance to disseminate that information to anybody because it was today, pretty much. But thank you. And based on information, I just want to say thank you.
Councillor?
We also appreciate President Wondolowski's outreach to us at the last city council meeting. She followed up again, asking that, you know, there'd be closer coordination between the budget subcommittee and Ways and Means. And so I was happy to help make that connection and know you're in good hands with Kate following up. So thank you all for your, for the great relationship we have with each other, working together for the schools.
Thank you. Councillor Bullock?
I just want to say I'm so excited to go to the Thunderbirds game this weekend with my child, who did a lot of reading over the holiday break. And so I really appreciate the schools and that we're getting to go with kids from other schools that we don't, you know, we don't normally get to do school activities together because they're in other schools. So I'm very appreciative for whoever made that, had that organized across the schools in the city. It was, it's really been fun. And so I'm very appreciative that whoever, whoever did that, it's been a wonderful. And the reading, I had COVID over Christmas, so we did a lot of reading.
We look forward to that. I think so far we have almost 160 kids going, so it should be a fun night and we look forward to that. The PTOs actually brought that forth to the assistant superintendent. And then he organized the reading challenge and we're very excited to participate and go to the game. And I just want to say too, while we brought it up though, if any parent does need transportation, the district is willing to coordinate with them because we don't want anyone to miss out on this event if they do want to attend. So please just reach out and we're happy to, to figure that out for everyone.
Anyone else? Well, thank you to Chair Johnson and to Superintendent.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you next month. Our next order of business is communications from the mayor. And I don't think we have any other city officers or employees besides the mayor and chief of staff. So welcome, Mayor.
Hi, everybody. Just going to tell you a couple of updates. The winter carnival's coming up. The 103rd Winter Carnival, January 31st to Sunday, February 2nd. The recreation has, Recreation Commission and Department have arranged a wonderful winter celebration that includes beloved events, including the parade of lights that we'll be in, downtown ice carvings and all kinds of fun things that are happening at Beacon Field. And I'm just encouraging everybody to go and enjoy part of it. So it really is a lot of fun. Let's all hope for a little snow. Budget update. We've got, the city's budget is underway for fiscal year '26. I've begun meeting with some of the department heads over the, just this week. And we're talking about priorities. In addition, the capital committee, thank you for those who serve on it, have met twice this past two weeks to formalize plans for capital spending. We're focused on establishing sensible priorities and a balanced budget. City Hall update. As you may have heard, that City Hall was closed on Friday, February 3rd to fix the building's internal plumbing systems. January 3rd. To ensure that the work was completed with no setbacks, allowing the building to reopen to the public on Monday. I want to take a special minute to recognize central maintenance. They were absolutely wonderful in their, over the weekends, over the weekend, working very diligently to get that done. And during, but during my time as mayor, we have experienced very many various challenges with the city hall building. So I went to planning and construction this week and we're working closely with the department heads and planning on construction to examine the long-term viability of that building. Warming center. The city in partnership with the Salvation Army and the Medical Reserve Corps and local social services agencies established a new overnight warming center at the Salvation Army that's been open over a dozen nights of late. We've had a great response from the fire department and the police department, as well as, as many volunteers to make sure that we had those shifts covered, covered. Establishing the warming center provides a resource for our homeless population and was an immediate goal of mine when I took office. I just want to thank everybody that's been involved. I reached out the other day and said we were short on blankets and provisions. And within a few hours, the sheriff's department was there and I had a car so full of things that I actually had trouble seeing out the back window. And it will be open tonight through Friday night and then we'll be looking again. I'll probably be looking at my phone again tonight to see the weather and talking with the, the fire chief to see which nights. 14 to 18 people there of late. We started out with four or five. On the days in, I, I had, people had a question about that that I had heard. When we actually go to weekly, we started with weekly shelter calls, they're now monthly calls. And it is absolutely true, they're going to be closing on the 28th. But you should know that ServiceNet has been working and all the families that have left have, have been housed somewhere. That is the plan, that people are not just being dispersed from there, but they're making a plan for each family. I want to spotlight the community efforts that supported the families that were in the shelter, including the holiday season tour drive and another donation drive. The Massachusetts Office of Housing in Liverpool Communities and the governor continue to oversee the state's shelter programs and the state will announce any future updates with that shelter program. I think I mentioned briefly last month, but Randy Whitney is here serving as our new treasury collector and she brings decades of finance and customer service experience to the position. We're mostly working in finance and the role for People's Bank, Buckley Healthcare Center and the Madnock Family Services. I'm very happy with everyone in our new finance department and they're working together wonderfully. Everyone continues to be extremely dedicated to their positions and I believe that they will bring great stability to the city. That's all I have, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Questions? Councillor Mastertutaro?
Good evening, Mayor. Regards to the warming shelter. That's a great thing. I, driving for the Justice Center, as you know, I see a lot of the folks that utilize our warming center and the one in Hadley. And a couple of them have approached me and asked, well, said that would like to know if they, we would take the wind chill into consideration as far as opening the warming center? Because sometimes it's above the, the temperature that it's open, but with the wind chill, it feels like it's much, much colder. So I don't, I don't know if that's something that could be worked out.
Actually, we do take that into consideration. It isn't just what it is, it's what it feels like, which includes the wind chill factor. I think that was one of the reasons why we, you know, why we were open for the last stretch because the wind was there as well, so we don't just look at the, the temperature.
Great, thanks.
I guess that's all we have. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Happy to hear it. Bye.
Great. So our next order of business is the public comment period. So just a reminder, if you want to speak, we have a sign up sheet right over here. We'll each have three minutes and we've got a timer. If you hear the timer go off, just try and finish your sentence. I really don't like cutting people off, so, but don't abuse it because you're not going to get added another four minutes. So, and the other thing, when you come up, you push the little button and it will go from red to green. Sometimes it takes a second, so just, just let it warm up. State your name and your address for the record or your community that you're coming from. And we're going to alternate between the folks in the room and also people in the Zoom room. Okay. So we're going to go first with a person who is online for public comment. So if you want to unmute yourself, I think it's Erica.
Hi, good evening. Thank you.
Can you state your full name and your address?
Yeah, yes. My name is Erica McGee and I'm at 24 Fort Square East here in Greenfield. And again, I'd like to say hello to everyone. And I'd like to share a letter that I had submitted to the recorder on November 17th, 2024, and it was never published. I'm not absolutely sure why, but I'd like to go ahead and read the letter that I submit, I wanted to submit. It states that a man, sorry. A man who worked in nonprofit housing in greater Boston for 35 years, moved to Greenfield a year ago and is praising in a November 16th letter to the editor, some common sense zoning for Greenfield that will give greater housing options. He wants to double the number of apartments that can be built without a special permit to 50. He likes accessory dwelling units on small lots because they give greater housing options to residents. This individual has greater financial options than most Greenfield residents. He bought a house for $650,000, 59th, sorry, $650,000 in an upscale neighborhood. It has five bedrooms, two kitchens, is classified as a two-family and best of all, is assessed by the city at less than half of its recent sale value. He's getting a nice tax break from the city, I would say. Why can't developers afford to develop less than 50 apartments? The zoning proposal, excuse me, before the city council actually is to remove the apartment limit completely. Why is someone who is attracted, who was attracted to Greenfield to buy a very expensive two-family home with two kitchens and five bedrooms, which could cost twice as much in Newton, Mass, pushing for residents to have the right to build an ADU in their backyard? This homeowner has greater financial, financial options than he's not, that he's not using and he certainly doesn't need an ADU in his side yard, giving space already inside the home. People with deep pockets have been attracted to Greenfield for many years because of our cheaper, high-end homes. But for those not blessed with investment resources, we offer them a tidy home rental in some, in some accident landlord's backyard and a guarantee of no option to move up the housing ladder. There's no justice in this kind of system. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Beth Lorenz.
Thank you for letting me speak today. I am Beth Lorenz. I'm located at 39 Sunrise Avenue in Greenfield. I have been a resident and business owner since 1984 in the city of Greenfield. It's possible you still drive a car I sold you or inspected for you or stood with me at various fundraising events. As a planning board past member, I value projects that created reuse of existing structures for residential living, nonprofits or retail before building out open space. As a resident, I renovated my home originally built in 1964 by Dominic Feranti on Sunrise Avenue overlooking the Connecticut River Valley. Bald eagles fly overhead, recently delisted from the endangered species, but still in the area a threat for the long-eared bat and the red-headed woodpecker in our neighborhood. Soon, it seems, I will also be your unwilling sewer connection for the seven-acre multifamily development of noble home design leased through the Valley Community Land Trust, where the shit will run, excuse me, where the shit will run uphill into an undermined driveway for the initial slated 22 units because the builder was not aware that the building location adjoining Valley View and Stone Farm Lane used septic systems. Imagine my delight if there are additional units to follow without restriction on numbers and scale. I mention all of this to reinforce the concern that site plan review, the use of special permits, variances and zoning approval should not be given away easily. Building inspectors should work with members of planning and zoning to keep a butter's informed prior to changing our environment and landscape. I support councillor Minhos' decision not to remove the apartment cap for all and to set height restrictions to enhance the character and the scale of our neighboring properties that also portray our community that house items or historical structures like poetry. Thank you for the opportunity to let you express my opinion and I am thoughtful and thankful for what you do spend your time doing for all of us.
Thank you. Our next person is Susan. I always say your name wrong, Susan. I always say your name wrong, Susan.
That's okay. I'll say your name wrong because I'm about to work out.
My name is Susan Borgaftic. I live at 45 Forest Avenue in Greenfield. Counselors, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm speaking for myself and for Housing Greenfield. I sent you an email about the economics of affordable housing, which I hope you had a chance to review. It really explains a great deal about why the 24-unit limit does not work for affordable housing in town, but I won't repeat those comments here. Tax bills came out recently, and I'm sure you've heard from your constituents about taxes. Family finances are difficult and may become more so. I want to talk to you about how erasing the 24-unit development limit on the CCNSR zones impacts those taxes. Right now, we have a shortage of homes, whether rental or for ownership, that is worse than any area in eastern Massachusetts. We have between 0.5% and 0.1% vacancy rates overall. A healthy vacancy rate is 5% to 7%. We have a long way to go before we have a healthy housing market. You also hear from your constituency about the need for jobs that pay a living wage. The need for jobs and the need for affordable housing are interconnected. I know of several people in town with very good jobs who cannot find housing appropriate to their needs. I also know of present employers who say that they cannot attract workers because there's no place for their workers to live, rental or for ownership. And I know of potential employers who would be interested in moving and growing their businesses here, but hesitate to do so because they are concerned that their employees will not be able to find housing. If we want a reasonable taxation, we need to find ways to build more housing, all kinds of housing. A key to building that housing is the development of affordable housing as defined by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Affordability, according to HUD, for a Greenfield family of four in 2025 is defined as an income of $109,500. If a family has less income than that, it is eligible for some level of subsidy. We need to build housing that meets the needs of this family and many others. If we do not do so, Greenfield will go into economic decline, and the taxes of everyone who already lives here will continue to rise at a rapid rate. One piece of this puzzle is to do away with the 24-unit limit on housing development in the CCNSR zones, while all other zoning requirements remain in place. This will allow for the development of safe, clean, attractive, accessible, and affordable housing in accordance with HUD rules and our zoning ordinances. It will start to turn around the growth conundrum that Greenfield finds itself in. I'll quickly do it. We need more jobs and businesses, but there's no place for people who want those jobs or work for those businesses to live. It will allow seniors like me to consider moving to smaller, more easily accessible home or apartments, making my larger home available for those families who can't find a house.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Next person on the list is Carl Woodruff.
My name's Carl Woodruff. I live at 60 James Street in Greenfield. I'm also a builder in the area, Oxbow Design Build. Susan, who just spoke before me, said, I think, a lot of what I already wanted to say in a way that's more articulate than I could, but I do want to just add a few things to that. You know, I think the multifamily, the expansion of multifamily over 24 units is a really necessary piece of creating more affordability in housing in Greenfield. The efficiency of scale really can't be overstated. You know, as a builder, I basically every week am faced with having to give bad news to our clients about how much their project is going to cost. You know, people have been saving for 20, 30, 40 years to try to build the house that they've always wanted to live in, and unfortunately, the rising costs of construction make that completely unattainable to most of the people that we speak to. We are a worker-owned cooperative. We have 25 workers in the valley. We are a very modest company. We do not do large developments. We do single-family, two-family, three-family, and we really try to work with those clients as much as possible, but the reality is, you know, the changing costs for construction, the increased requirements from the energy code and the building code just make that type of construction really entirely unaffordable, and with the new energy code, the significant remodel and renovation of existing single-family and two-family units is now unfortunately also unattainable to most people. In a city like Greenfield that has the deficit of housing that we do, there really is no other option other than larger multifamily developments on single lots where we can really benefit from that efficiency of scale. I think I'm going to, I'm going to leave it there, but I'm also happy to talk with anyone after this. We do have a number of projects in Greenfield that we've completed recently and are planning to do. These are small and modest projects, but I'd be happy to talk more about them with anybody. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Nan Sibley.
My name is Nan Sibley. I live at 25 Freeman Drive in Greenfield. I'm going to speak fast because I am verbose. First, I want to congratulate the city council on its ability to recognize the growing needs of our community and to take swift action to embrace zoning opportunities. I'm speaking to you, the city council, but also to anyone who cares to listen behind me, or online, or anywhere, with my full chest on this matter. The opposition to your courageous vote is largely rooted in fear and stigma, fear of change, fear for unknown, fear of harm to a romanticized nostalgia of our quaint little slice of New England living. I was born here, I was raised here, I have struggled and also thrived here. You're looking at a woman who has a world of experiences to draw from, and I'm going to share some of the unlovely parts of it with you. I've been homeless here. As a teen, I could set up a tent in dark, I have slept at Sajem's Head. I have benefited from dial self here, and my children have experienced Christmas, where the ornaments on the tree were designs we cut from wrapping paper and we hung them on the tree. I dragged, pregnant, to my place where I was couch surfing with a friend. And that tree was the discarded leftovers outside Salvation Army, excuse me. The only gifts my children received that year were from charity here in this city that I am proud to call home. At that time, it was not proud to have me. I was homeless, couching it with an acquaintance while going through a volatile divorce. I was able to access Section 8 quickly because of domestic violence. I raised my children in Greenfield Gardens, and they are all adults now, doing well. I currently own a home here with my husband. The value was above the city average, and my credit score is higher than a very small percent in this country. A true measure of a community is how it treats its most vulnerable. I do not wish to spend this precious time spouting math or statistics. You guys have plenty of that. You need to hear how measures like this have helped. Homelessness was not the end of my story. Poverty was not the end of my story. Please continue to be courageous and take these opportunities to create a more resilient community that remains current to the needs of the people living here and relevant. Please remember that we have people sleeping outside tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Ferante.
I lived in Greenfield for 59 years, and my family has lived on Sunrise Avenue for over 40 years. Removing the apartment gap, cap, excuse me, is unhealthy. Please don't allow the Valley Housing Co-op and Noble Homes to desecrate and ruin our neighborhood, to lure in non-locals to topple our peaceful community with their commune, all under the lie of affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Denim Lunt.
There certainly are different sides to this equation here, aren't there, folks?
Do we get your name and address, please?
Sorry, my name is Denim Lunt. I live on Sunrise Avenue, Greenfield, Mass. I think it's important that people who are wary of high-powered development and concerned about it running, you know, wild in our town, our city, is understood in, and it is understood that people who may not favor how and where that's being done are still gung ho for improving a lot of people who need housing. It's very clear that's important. That said, I have issued a Reader's Right column in that never quite made it, so I thought I'd access a little of it tonight, because it sort of speaks to that. The reason I opened up with the important point of knowing that anybody in this room is crazy not to accept the reality of the need for housing. That said, the resentment from abutters and existing property owners in our neighborhood regarding proposed development that's already on the table is very palpable. Along with quality of life and peace of mind, their property resale values could easily decline. Leaning problems with a proposed development would include a minimum of a year and a half of disruption during construction, constant noise, an invasion of privacy, septic and water provisions yet to be determined, increased traffic in the neighborhoods, fire hazard, truck accessibility, and increased lighting spillage from what could be 44 added units in our parking areas. That's a lot of change to bring into a existing neighborhood that values what it has now. Also, there could be a loss of homeowner equity, maybe more of you know about that than I, but it's certainly mentioned a lot for longstanding property owners relying on that equity for retirement, for example, and a possible reduction of city real estate tax income due to tax abatement filings from homeowners over a loss of value of their properties. It's often not if you build, it's where you build. Assisting people in need of housing is laudable, but the number and density of the proposed new dwellings are incompatible with the character and scale of this long-established neighborhood, which is a key approval criteria for a special permit review. Decades of investment by Greenfield homeowners need to be respected and protected. Thank you for listening, and thanks for your time.
Thank you. I'm going to move to the online, and if we can refrain from clapping, thank you. The next one is Umari Williams, please.
Yes, my name is Umari Williams, and I live on Conway Street here in Greenfield. And I just really want to support what Susan, I'm sorry, I didn't catch her last name, said. I think it's very important that we look at all of those elements, but I also think it's really important that we look at honestly the moral element. Housing is a human right, and Greenfield is very short on housing, and people should not be struggling to just find a place to call home. And I understand that people don't want something in their neighborhood that's going to necessarily change the character of the neighborhood, but I think we have to take a longer view than that and a more charitable view and recognize that there, but for the grace of God, it could be anyone of us or someone we know who's unhoused, and that there is something that, as a Black woman, I hear this conversation, and some of it makes me really uncomfortable, because I feel like I'm hearing a conversation that justified redlining. So I just want people to consider, we're talking about other human beings here, and that needs to be more important than our immediate and short-term comfort around a change in what a neighborhood might look like. And we also need to not stigmatize people and decide that because someone has been unhoused, that it means something about them that is negative. And I just think it's very important that we consider those things as well, and I think that the 24-unit cap should be removed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Wendy Goodman.
I'm getting here. Hi, and good evening. Wendy Goodman, 529 Green River Road. First, again, I just want to thank you guys. Laura, congratulations, and thank you for doing, running a very effective meeting. Mayor and the city are thrilled to hear about the warming station and was thrilled to see that the library is being used as such. I wasn't prepared to speak, I haven't written anything, but what my concern is about giving over the cap is I don't want us to lose, and I might be speaking out of term, but I don't want us to lose our influence over how we continue to develop. So putting that, is there a way to do it as a flexible cap? Is there a way to do it so that we don't say, no, you can't go beyond that, but we restrict the right to see how that proceeds? The other thing that occurs to me, and it's very hard to do, but very effective to do it, is to involve the communities that are going to be affected as much as possible in the process, because we know that the more stakeholders that are involved, the easier this process is. And I can't imagine anyone wouldn't be upset with realizing that their home that they have loved and lived in for a long time is going to be changed, however that's going to happen, without their input. So I'm wondering if there's a way that we can look at this whole piece of planning and development in a little bit more inclusive and collaborative way than we have in the past. I, I think we should keep some kind of a cap. If it's not 24, what is it, what's the right, what's the right level? But people do need housing, our world is changing. We're blessed that we've gotten to enjoy so much of what we've gotten to enjoy, and how do we move together forward in a way that works for everybody? So I hope we can look at that without giving over the power of influence, because it's our, it's our home, it's our land. How do we take care of it, and how do we still have control? So thank you very much, thank you for your service. Well done, may this year be better than expected. Have a good night.
Thank you.
And I hope the GCTV is getting, because I had to turn it off, it was very, very staticy. So maybe they can adjust that. Thank you.
And next have Joan Marie Jackson, please.
City Council, this new year, 2025. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. And I also like to acknowledge the actual birthday of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and it's a very good opportunity to speak out for the community, for our fellow man. and it's a very good opportunity to speak out for the community, for our fellow man, for what's, what's right, excuse me, what's right and what's possible. My name is Joan Marie Jackson and I live at 2 Chestnut Hill. Last night when I testified at the EDC meeting, I asked that the citizens' petition for an ADU, minimum lot size, and open space protection be tabled. And I ask the full council again tonight, table our motion until the final ADU regs are issued on February 2nd. At the state hearing last Friday on January 10th on ADU regs, a number of people complained that the regulations should be changed to make it clear that only single-family homes can add an ADU, not homes that are already two or three-family dwellings. One land use consultant from Conway said the draft state regulations were an example of, quote-unquote, "legislative creep", where regulations go beyond what the law actually says. He said some local bylaws historically only allowed single-family dwellings on residential lots. We don't do that in Greenfield. Our residential zones all allow single-family, two-family, and three-family dwellings by right. We allow multifamily houses in all our residential districts by special permit. We do not have exclusionary zoning. Greenfield's draft ADU regulations say, quote, "Only one ADU may be created within a single-family or two-family house or house lot. That two-family house or lot should be deleted. We should only allow one ADU on a single-family lot. If I add a second housing unit inside my principal dwelling, that's an ADU. I should not be allowed to add a second ADU on that lot. The state ADU law says it applies to, quote, "The use of land or structures for a single accessory dwelling unit." And the draft state regs says a dwelling unit is for one or more persons. Shouldn't we state the building code limit in our ordinance so we don't discover seven or eight people crammed into a tiny home? I'm urging the city council to rescind its December vote allowing an unlimited number of units in the multifamily building. Instead, we have the right to set the gross density on a lot, which is a units-per-acre measurement. In February, let's have an open discussion about these changes, along with the minimum lot size and open space. We can reach a compromise. We helped, we helped reach a compromise on your zone in December. Listen to your constituents. Dismissing citizen ideas tonight is a disservice to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up we have Pamela Goodwin.
Good evening, Pamela Goodwin, 54 High Street. I'm going to agree with Wendy. I thought it was a great presentation. I also echo Susan Margaptick's talk. I don't feel like talking about statistics either. I did send an email to you people today, and I usually don't email. I will say that I've already publicly come out and said I was unhoused. I actually chose homelessness over mistreatment by property managers. I got tired of protection orders. Can you mind looking online to make sure that you're muted? Thank you. So I lived in my car at 71. My children didn't have room in any of their houses for me. It went on for a number of weeks. And I do know that housing is a human right. I belong to Citizen Housing and Planning, Housing Greenfield, Massachusetts Coalition for the Homelessness. And I am thankful that we're not doing what Brockton Fall River in Boston is doing, breaking up encampments, throwing homeless people into jail. At least they would be warm and maybe get food. But they're also fining people as if they have money to pay for a fine because they're where they don't belong. These are families, not just homeless veterans. The rents keep going up. We don't have any kind of rent control going on. When I was going door-knocking, I saw a lot of houses that I would consider kind of pretty slummy. I was kind of surprised. I know the Board of Health keeps on top of that situation. The eviction rates are through the roof. I'm going to meet with someone who is facing an eviction tomorrow morning because I've had the experience not of being evicted, but I chose to be safe. There is a group called Mouse Housing, and I have attended workshops. A lot of people who are unhoused, who do end up finally getting housing, need a lot of assistance in order to get the interview process done, get through the red tape paperwork, services like being plugged into AA, DA. If they can't keep their books straight, then somebody else can manage their books and keep them paying their rent on time. There's all kinds of reasons why we have unhoused people. As a volunteer at the warming shelter, I can say to my experience there, many of them would be able to stay in a place should they find a location. Some of them do need services. That's why the Whale Street Shelter is going to have services plugged in over there. If you have some issues, whether they're physical or mental, it's called a reasonable accommodation. It's the law, and people need the help. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Mitchell Spade.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge-
I get your name and address, please?
Mitch Spade, 2 Chestnut Hill. I'd like to acknowledge the birthday of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. My name is Mitch Spade. I live at 2 Chestnut Hill. At last Friday's state ADU regulation hearing, I heard citizens from the Cape to the Berkshires criticizing the vague language and overreach of the housing and livable communities' ADU language. It goes beyond statutory language. Massachusetts is a homeward state where the zoning powers reside at the city and town level. The state is narrowing our zoning authority. What housing and living communities has done is unlawfully extended what the legislature established. I said at the hearing that the use of the words reasonable and unreasonable throughout these regulations are arbitrary and capricious because they are unmeasurable and therefore subject to varying interpretations from municipality to municipalities or court to court. I am concerned that our draft ordinance eliminates the requirement for a site plan review for a lot that will have two dwellings on it instead of one. Our site plan review ordinance requires design features which will integrate the proposed development into existing landscape, maintain neighborhood character, enhance aesthetic assets, and screen objectional features from neighbors. Our site plan review approval regs evaluate the provision of open spaces. I don't want neighbors to lose these protections. State ADU laws allow cities to include reasonable regulations, including but not limited to site plan review and building dimensions. I urge the city council to go back to the September 26, 2024 version of our ADU ordinance to require a site plan review for any ADU which is detached. I ask you tonight to pass a motion to table the citizens' petition and take it up again in February, when you have the rest of the city's drafts ADU in front of you. I also urge you to rescind your motion on unlimited dwelling units in a multifamily structure. I worry that removing height limits is coming next. I don't want the sea of Greenfield becoming a high-rise heaven. Again, this is a blatant attack by the governor to end single-family zoning as we know it. This is a debacle, not only governmentally, but politically, wrong-headed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Andrew Leaf.
My name is Andrew Leaf. My wife and I arrived here in Greenfield in relatively new-
Do we get your address, please?
18 Sunrise, here in Greenfield. We have a son who's lived here for many years. And we were happy to arrive in this community and delighted with the neighborhood in which we landed on Sunrise Avenue. At the same time, we share a general concern for the lack of affordable housing, not only in Greenfield, not only in Western Massachusetts, but throughout the country. So when we heard that the property beneath us on Stone Farm Lane was going to be developed, we were, of course, interested and concerned that it would be done well. At the same time, we certainly understood the motivation for adding that housing. We attended a national meeting where the people planning and projecting the project described it, declared their intention to explain what would happen, sent a really well-developed site plan, and they expressed concern about the aesthetics of the development and concern for the land, and we were very impressed. And given our concern, shared concern for affordable housing, and their intention to involve the neighborhood or the community that would be most affected in the planning and have the opportunity to comment on the design, we were really quite pleased. One reason we were pleased frankly was that we felt that this project was going to be handled in a way that would not deteriorate the quality of the neighborhood, that people were generally concerned and wanted to elicit our concerns, our wishes, our feelings about the proposed design. We subsequently participated in, I think, three other meetings, which were purported to do the same thing, to build confidence in the community members, in the project. We noticed that each time we went to one of these meetings, the number of units was increased with no great explanation of it. At no time, however, was there announcement that there'd be no cap on the development of units. And that seemed quite shocking and inconsistent with the declared intention of involving the community in an understanding of just what we've done and how it would affect the residents of that community. They did elicit concerns. The ones I remember in particular were traffic issues and how the language issue would be resolved.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Next on my list is Cynthia Pease.
Hello, I'm Cynthia Pease from Sunrise Avenue. Being a Greenfield taxpayer and parent of young children, I'm saddened by all of the town councilors for not considering the well-being and safety of the town we live in. This pertains specifically to the vote taken in December removing the limit on unit caps. Yes, housing is needed, but every development should be considered and the consequences it will have on the town. Opening up the unit cap without questions is going to only grow the disdain of current taxpayers and the safety of all of us. This is also going to compromise the safety of our children and the emergency services needed to respond to the calls at units of substantial size. I urge the city councilors to support Council Minahan's motion to reconsider your vote that you took in December to allow apartment buildings to have an unlimited number of dwelling residences. Also, to have a counselor on this board that will benefit from this unit cap being removed is a conflict of interest, and this counselor should be removed from any votes pertaining to housing. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next I have Kristen Bates.
Hi, Kristen Bates, 22 Sunrise Ave, Greenfield. As a lifelong resident of Greenfield and abutter to the proposed multifamily condo projects on Stone Farm Lane, I'm deeply concerned and strongly opposed to the city council allowing these types of construction by right. The ramifications will be a drastic change that will fundamentally alter the character of our neighborhood and our city. The city is overlooking the significant strain these developments would place on our infrastructure, including roadways or lack thereof for the Stone Farm area as we received a non-paved oil TRG mixed mess, our one-way egress, emergency services access, not to mention water and sewer piping capacities, all while in turn increasing traffic congestion and reducing green space. Speaking of green space, I thought the very definition of a land trust was to preserve the land, but apparently the city and the land trust have mutually defined it to be build 20 condo units with no deep dive required into its consequences. Each one of you risks sacrificing the quality of life for current residents, potentially even future, who will bear the brunt of these impacts, most specifically the plummeting of our property values that abut these types of infrastructures without any meaningful review or thoughtful consideration. This isn't just an issue for those that live wherever the proposed buildings are being built issue. It's about preserving the well-being and identity of our long-standing rural residential community and city we call Greenfield. I appreciate it. Thank you to each one of you for your opportunity to speak. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Al Norman, please.
Counselors, for the record, my name is Al Norman. I live on Grayell Street. Last night at the EDC hearing on the citizens' petition, process got in the way of progress. I hope every counselor now realizes how state law works to handle a zoning petition under Chapter 48, Section 5. You have more than power just to accept or reject a petition. You have the right to accept a petition with amendments, which means when your constituents bring an issue to you, you can see is a compromise possible. I looked for a compromise last month when the council was considering how to develop apartments in the SR zone, and we came up with a compromise that the council accepted. We came up with a compromise. We have asked the council to put a minimum lot size for an ADU. If half an acre is too large, draw another line that's lower. Make some offer. But there must be some parcels that are too small to carry two homes on without it being too dense. One of the purposes of our zoning is to provide for open space. It doesn't say just on large lots. Several councilors said last night that there was some conversation worth having over the issues in the citizens' petition because lot size and open space are mainstream zoning issues. How does a citizen actually have a conversation with this council? We speak for three minutes, no questions are asked. During council meetings, no questions can be posed or answered. It's hard for citizens to have a meaningful conversation with this council or Planning Board or Conservation Commission. Do we have to limit ourselves to one-to-one conversations outside of meetings? I think all councillors know that if you do not act on a petition now within 90 days of a public hearing, guess what? Not much happens. You just have another public hearing. That's not the impression that people had last night. We're asking the full council tonight, take Councilor Minahan's motion, table this citizen amendment. Table it. The state's final regulations will be out in 18 days. Look at the draft from the director of the planning in February. You'll look at the petitions as well. You can look at both at that time. Can we produce a document based on a compromised conversation? A back-and-forth conversation at a public hearing or at an EDC meeting where the public and the council members actually converse? The ADU law says that ADUs may be, quote, "may be subject to reasonable regulations, including but not limited to site plan review, regulations concerning dimensional setbacks, and the balkan height of structures." We're not limited to the specific items mentioned in this law. That's just the start of this. And I will close by saying this. I really urge you to override the amendment that you adopted on an unlimited apartment cap. You know, remember, this is an unlimited cap per structure. If I build two units, I have 48 units.
Thank you.
Unlimited is unacceptable. Thank you.
Next, we have Patty O'Neill, please.
Hello, my name is Patty O'Neill. I live in Precinct 1. And I emailed you all earlier today, but I wanted to also read out my email for everybody in the room and online because I think this is an important conversation to have. I'm ready to express support for your prior decision to remove the arbitrary 24-unit limit on one foundation buildings for the CC and SR zones, which is in line with the Greenfield Housing Study folks worked so hard on. Please keep the zoning change known on units. We can address the concern about outsized developments and other and better ways that don't preclude us from the best source of affordable housing funding, state subsidies. I'm against arbitrary limits on the number of units a building can have, which is what the 24 number is. Nobody can say what it originated from, especially when it makes an already tedious and restrictive process of building realistically affordable housing even more senselessly difficult. I am also against an arbitrarily large number of units, which I consider to be only considering economies of scale that are detached from the reality of what makes sense for sustainable growth and resilient planning for our region. I have faith that we have enough other checks and zoning restrictions to keep anything from getting too big, and I hope that we can continue to work with the state on making sure Greenfield can get emergency funding for affordable housing that doesn't make us compete with a locality like Boston for size. I look forward to your help supporting our ability to locally fund affordable housing, such as the creation of an affordable housing trust in addition to our CPA and community development block grants and more, so we are better able to help our neighbors and family get the housing we need, and we don't have to be so at the mercy of state funding subsidy rules or random investors' profit margins. And I just want to reiterate that things like cooperative models, which Stone Farm Lane is one of and which I'm also looking into for my own apartment building, are ways, creative ways of approaching affordable housing, and I want us all to just try to keep an open mind about the ways that we can pull our money together to have affordable housing that we can actually be in control of. And just also that this is, all of these changes are trying to make the best possible compromise to minimize development and maintain open space. And like, we're really, really trying our best, and it's also really exciting. So I just thank you for caring so much, and I'm looking forward to talking about this more with everybody. Thanks.
Thank you. I next have Colleen Duskovich.
Hello, my name is Colleen Duskovich. I live at 23 Turner's Falls Row. My husband and I moved to Greenfield in 1985, and we started a plumbing and heating business. And we incorporated it in 1988. We have serviced many properties in Greenfield. My biggest concern is eliminating the, or establishing the right where there would be no studies on the infrastructure, the schools, the police, and all the other services. My worry is that we need to have certain criteria so that we don't have mishaps. At the very least, having things go wrong and have it fall on the taxpayers. Again, because I do understand how a lot of the things in Greenfield work, my concern is that we might be overburdening our systems if we aren't careful about how much housing and how it is controlled. I do want to say that I do urge the city council, the city council, excuse me, to reconsider your vote in December to allow apartment buildings to have an unlimited number of dwelling residents. Please reverse that vote to ensure future developments are compatible with the scale and character of existing residential neighborhoods. I also ask you to support the citizens zoning amendment on ADUs, which sets a minimum lot size for backyard AUDs and protects open space on such lots. If someone wants to build a second dwelling on their lot, we should keep the requirement that they are at least to get a site plan review by our planning board and then neighbors get notified to the commitment. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you so much. I'm going to move now to, we have one more online. Ryan Whitney, please.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak. I've heard a lot of people speak tonight, and the last lady
Could I give you your name and address first?
What I was saying is like, I wonder how we're not
Name and address first.
Money from you.
I need you to state your name and address for the record, sorry. You may need to unroot.
Ryan Whitney, Greenfield, Massachusetts. Sorry, my phone must have some issues. I just, the last lady that spoke, continue on ahead for me. I just wonder about infrastructure, and that means police, fire, and safety. Like she said, like, I look at a house that once had a single family with maybe, you know, two kids going to school in it, and now you're going to make it into a three-family with three kids going to school and then three families using septic and stuff like that. Where are the studies like that tell how we're going to handle that cost? If that house has to provide more in taxes for kids going to school and infrastructure, how are we recuperating? Like, how are we getting back that tax money if we're not just passing it off to another citizen? Like, that's not very fair. So I just, I asked a assessor right before this meeting, and like, with all this housing coming in, and if you're talking about nonprofits using this housing and stuff like that, we already have 290 million in nonprofits in this town for such a small town in untaxable property. And that means that somebody else has got to pay for infrastructure or whatever else comes with that cost, the police costs to them facilities, like, because they're not even being taxed for it. So I don't know how we can just keep reading to people that are already here for newcomers to come and to call people nindy for, like, it's just not affordable for us. It's not that we're nindy. Like, I like to help people. I just really am being polite. So that's all I'd like to see and concern about. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. I've got two more folks. Pam Athena Lurich, okay.
Hello, yes, and my name is Pam. My middle name is Athena. So my actual middle name is Pam Lurich. Just to get clear about that. And I live at 170 Davis Street on the corner of Garfield and Davis. And actually, to be honest, I'm just kind of giving a bit of a giggle about all this. And I am concerned about, I really can't change the character and the beauty of Greenfield. And when I first moved here, I felt like I was living in a Boston area. I felt like I was moving out of the country. And I love all the old town streets. And I'm also, you know, concerned about having a house that people need, people need housing, their families need. And I live within my house. I have a neighborhood which I watch below market rate. And sometimes I go back from the city and I'm including it in junkyard before. And so I'm just glad this is clear that the whole issue seems to be completely discussed and talked about. Glad to be here. I'm getting a boost. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And then I've got Chris Ethier.
Thank you. Chris Ethier, 26 Sunrise Ave. You've heard a lot of comments from a lot of people on our neighborhood. A lot of it has to do with up-and-coming projects that are coming in. And then we've, some of us have talked about the ADU issues. I have been here for, well, I was born in Greenfield in 1948, so I've been here a long time. That said, I was in business almost 50 years in Greenfield. I kind of know it pretty well. I've been in your seats. I've been around. ADU, and first of all, I believe a tremendous overreach by the state to tell us what our zoning should be. I don't believe everybody in this town is looking for an extra neighbor in their backyard. I do think it's a very good system to create housing. There has to be some rules and regulations. Whether you go back to the state and demand that they give them or give you the power to do it rather than take it from us, I certainly would want that to happen. We have very good zoning boards, very good planning boards, a very good council. All of you should be making decisions for us, not Boston. So that's my ADU speech. As far as the knocking off housing units at a certain number, there needs to be a number. You can't go unlimited. Unlimited is, okay, we need 600 units, which a lot of people know about, except that it's in 10 years, okay? 10 years. If we look at what's being on the board now that are being sized up now, you're talking about a fair amount of units between two or three projects that are already, you know, in the works. And I'm not talking about our neighborhood even. That said, how many is enough? I sold bicycles. I can't tell you. I know more homeless than everybody in this council. I mean, they're my customers. I know them. I know them. I mean, I walk down Main Street, I say hi to the business guys, and I stop and talk to the guys on the bench. So, and I get it. I know that the housing for them is very important. I realize it's an endemic of every single town around here. And I also realize, being the county seat, we have an obligation because we've got a jail too. And guess what? All those county seat things, all of the different organizations we have in town that provide services for people means people have to be somewhere. Are we a bedroom community for it? Somewhat. But give it some thought and give us some good reasonable rules. Thank you. Appreciate the time, and thank you for your service. It's important.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for speaking tonight. I think that's the last speaker on public comment. We're all passionate about Greenfield. It's why we're here. So it makes me feel good to see a room filled with people who care about this community. I, we have lots of different views in the room, and that's why we're here. So thank you for being part of this. And just a reminder, we have planning committee and other committees that are also making these decisions. And some of them have more power in the decisions than this council does on certain issues. So I just want to encourage everybody to continue showing up and show up for the other subcommittees because that matters as well while we're making the sausage before it gets here. So the next item tonight is the public hearing. Can I ask Councillor Toranzo to read the public hearing notice?
Sure thing. In accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January 15, 2025, at 6:30 PM at John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, in Zoom. To receive public input on the following: Transfer $2,600,000 from free cash to capital stabilization fund; transfer $200,000 from free cash to compensated absences fund; transfer $100,000 from free cash to contract stabilization fund. The city council may consider the same on Wednesday, January 15, 2025, at 6:30 PM at John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, in Zoom. That's it.
Thank you. I'm opening the public hearing at 8:00 PM. Could we ask you, Councillor Toranzo, to read the second reading?
Sure. Second, city council second reading. Transfer $2,600,000 from free cash to capital stabilization fund; transfer $200,000 from free cash to compensated absences fund; transfer $100,000 from free cash to contract stabilization fund.
Does anybody want to speak to any of these topics? And noting that there's no one signed up on the public hearing. Seeing that nobody wants to speak, it's 8:01, and we're closing the public hearing. Thank you. All right, let's take a breath. And we're at our break time, so can we take a five-minute? We usually do five for a time. Okay, we're going to take five minutes and be back at 8:06. All right. All right. Good evening. Could folks take their seats? We're back in session. And if you don't take your seats, if you could go outside so that we can hear, thank you. All right, our next order of business is our motions, orders, and resolutions. The first is the motion for reconsideration, and I will ask Councilor Minhaas to read that, please. Page 23, for those following at home.
I'm just flipping to that right now.
Hold on one second. Okay. Councilor Healy, can you confirm that you are still online?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. The voice from above. All right, Councilor Minhaas.
Okie dokie. All righty. Order number FY25-034. The City Council moved that it be ordered, a motion for reconsideration pursuant to the City Council Rules of Procedure, Rule 6B. I hereby submit a motion to reconsider. The following motion passed at the City Council meeting on December 18th, 2024. Order number FY24-024.1. Voted that the City Council of Greenfield amend the zoning ordinance, Chapter 200, Section 200-40, multifamily dual and subsection B procedure by striking Paragraph 4 in its entirety as follows in attached Exhibit A and further amend the table of contents and index of the code. And further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the City of Greenfield. Do I have to keep on reading?
You've got it. You're all set.
This is it? Okay, thank you.
Great. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so discussion. Just before we discuss, I'd like to give the opportunity for Councilor Minhaas to explain his motion. And then after that, I would like to hand it over to either Councilor Bullock to talk about the original. But I just want to be clear, we're only voting on whether we're going to reconsider it and not about the amendment itself. Thank you.
Okay, so.
So we're just going to discuss taking it and reconsidering it.
Yeah, so basically, the reason why I did this is I was pretty confused in the last meeting. And then when I watched it again and tried to kind of look through what happened, it was really hard for me to follow. And that was on top of a bunch of constituents just being like, what just happened? What is going on? We would like some clarification. And to be honest, I mean, I voted for it, but I didn't even know what the hell I was voting for. So, um, I feel like many other councillors can also probably attest to the fact that it was kind of confusing. Second, on the actual substance of what was voted, I think a bunch of constituents have, uh, raised.
We're talking about taking it from the table, so we're not going to get into substance. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other discussion on taking it for reconsideration? Okay, then I'm gonna, uh, Councilor Gordon.
Yeah, thank you. I, I was here last month. We had a long and windy conversation about the proposal. That is certainly true. I will say for myself, I, by the end of it, I was very clear on what I was voting on. I didn't actually hear a lot of other confusion from other members of the council. I can, I also understand that not being in the room makes it harder, I think, sometimes, uh, to follow what happens in here. But, um, I, I do think that we made a good decision last month, and, and I don't feel the need to reconsider it.
Council Bullock?
Just, I want to just say this for a point of clarity. That... I'm trying to figure out how to do this without going beyond taking it from the table.
Is it about taking from the table or something else?
Yeah, so if, if we're taking this from the table because we think that this undid limits on, um, units across all zones in the city, that's not what, that's not what happened. And so I just want us to be clear that taking this from the table doesn't have anything to do with that if that's why we're taking it from the table. I, yeah, I think that's as far as I can go.
Thank you. Any other councillors? I'm gonna go to Councilor Garrett and then Councilor Minhaas. I want to make sure everybody who wants to speak first.
So it's, I just wanted to address the process which was confusing last month and why we spent so much time on it. There's been mention of a compromise, uh, in the semi-residential zone. The initial proposal, you know, and I know this is a different motion, but the reason that there was confusion, there was an initial proposal to have multifamily be by right in the semi-residential zone.
I just want to caution that we're getting into the substance and not take it from the table. Thank you.
Got it. Just to really be simple about it, the effort made, the time that was taken, was to ensure the compromise happened. This, this motion that's asked to be reconsidered was never addressed in a proposed compromise in any sort of way. And so that, I'm, I was genuinely flummoxed to hear that there was opposition to this after the proposal had come out. So that is, I think, as much as I can say about this without getting into the substance of the motion being asked to be reconsidered.
Councilor Minhaas?
Yeah, again, I just want to reiterate, I mean, the, my main reason for doing this is so that we can act in the spirit of transparency. And so the public knows exactly what we voted on and what we're talking about, regardless of how you would vote on it. I just think it would be beneficial if we gave it another thought and had that discussion in a more clear manner.
Councilor Toranzo?
Um, I also was kind of perplexed by getting, uh, notification that this was up for reconsideration as we did discuss this at length. And I feel that, uh, ultimately, if there were, um, regrets about it, um, to be frank, this had already gone through committee and committee and time and was spent on it. Those would have been the times to have a better understanding of what we were going over and talking about. And then we had a lengthy discussion. And if the, if the reconsideration is for, because some folks may not like the outcome of it, that's not what reconsiderations are generally for. You win some, you lose some. That's just the way it works. You may not be happy with everything that's done. You may vote against something and you'll, you lose. You may end up just voting for something because it's easier. But I didn't, I don't see a reason for this to essentially be reconsidered. It was a unanimous vote. You usually don't get a reconsideration on a unanimous vote. So I, I will be, I will just be clear that I am going to vote no on reconsidering this at all. Thank you.
Councilor Gold?
So please let me know if the steps outside the bounds of discretion.
So please let me know if this steps outside the bounds of discussing this motion. I am going to vote no for two reasons. One, because I was very clear about what I was voting on, and two, the reason, if the argument from the community is to reconsider, I've heard many, many, many people say tonight that this lifts any restrictions on development over twenty-four units, and if you watch last week's, last month's meeting, you will see that we didn't do that. We were really proud of the compromise that came from the community to mandate special permit for development over twenty-four units, and we're not lifting all restriction on development, so I'm trying to keep it brief, I could say more, but I'm, I'm hearing the concern from the community, and we did address that last month.
Thank you. I think we're ready for a vote.
Just to let everyone know, it needs a majority vote to be taken from the table. Counselor Gollum?
No.
Counselor Gordon?
No.
Counselor Master Tataro?
No.
Counselor Bullock?
No.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
No.
Counselor Brown?
No.
Vice President Garrett?
No.
Counselor Minhaas?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
No.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes.
No.
The motion is defeated. It stays on, it stays as was voted by the council.
Thank you. All right. Our next order is on the mayor's appointments, and that is, Counselor Gollub, please.
Just give me a moment, I'm going to open, wake back up my computer. Can someone tell me what page it's on? Thank you. Twenty-five? Okay. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter- Can we have quiet so that folks can focus here?
Folks, can, if you're having conversations just outside of the room, please, thank you.
Thank you. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section two-ten affirms the following appointments by the mayor to the following. Elderly and disabled taxation fund David Rolston term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. Planning board alternates Tom Bledsoe term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven. Short term to finish Amy McMahon's remaining term. And Erica Rue-Eese term to expire December twenty, December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight. Zoning Board of Appeals alternate Charles Roberts term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight, majority vote required.
Do we have a second? And can I get the committee report, please?
This received a unanimous positive recommendation, and with gratitude, as always, for everyone who is dedicating the time to this sometimes tedious and yet very important work.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, let's vote.
Counselor Gollub?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhaas?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Yep.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right. Page forty-five. All right, we're coming to our next motion, and that's GSEB Board of Commissioners, Counselor Gollub.
Yep. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section two-ten reaffirms the following members of the GSEB Board of Commissioners to correct the dates of terms to comply with MGL Chapter one-six-four Acts of two thousand and seventeen. Timothy, Timothy Farrell term to expire April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven. David Russell term to expire April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven. Jen Stromson term to expire April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven. Pamela Goodwin term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight, and Catherine Markham term to expire December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-nine, majority vote required.
Do I have a, excuse me, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, and committee report-
I ask again that if folks are going to have conversation, please take it out into the hallway because it is just distracting for us up here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion, second.
This received another positive unanimous recommendation with gratitude.
Great, thank you. Any comments or discussion? All right, vote.
Counselor Gollum?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Count, Vice President Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhaas?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Yep.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right, we're up to Counselor Toronto and Ways and Means sort of motions. All right.
I'll read the sort of motion. All right, order number FY twenty-five dash zero-three-one. The City Council upon recommendation of Mayor Disorga, an order to transfer two- An order to transfer two million six hundred thousand from free cash to the capital stabilization fund. Move that it be ordered that the City Council approves the transfer of the sum of two million six hundred thousand from free cash to the capital stabilization fund. Majority vote required.
Great, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, discussion, and, and let me know how it went in committee.
Well, you were there. And so there are half the people in the room. It was a positively unanimous recommendation.
And I bet you that's going to be the same coming down the line.
Yeah, foreshadowing, it's good.
I'm trying, so everybody knows what's coming up. All right, let's vote. Does anybody have any questions, discussion?
Counselor Gollub?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yep.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhaas?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Yep.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Fantastic, keep going down the line.
All right, order number FY twenty-five dash zero-three-two. The City Council upon recommendation of Mayor Disorga, an order to transfer two hundred thousand from free cash to the compensated absences fund. Move that it be ordered that the City Council approves the transfer of the sum of two hundred thousand from free cash to the compensated absences fund. Majority vote required. Positive unanimous recommendation from subcommittee. Second.
We're, we're just pausing so we can close the doors and have less ambient noise, thank you. Any discussion or questions from the council? And I know this one was unanimous in committee as well, so let's take a vote. Mr. Garrett?
Thank you. Okay. Counselor Gollub?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhaas?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Yep.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Woot, woot.
All right, MOA.
Order number, oh, we got one more transfer. Almost there. Order number FY twenty-five dash zero-three-three. The City Council upon recommendation of Mayor Disorga, an order to transfer a hundred thousand from free cash to the contract stabilization fund. Move that it be ordered that the City Council approves the transfer of the sum of one hundred thousand from free cash to the contract stabilization fund. Majority vote required. Positive unanimous at subcommittee.
Did we get a second and I missed it?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? All right, let's move to vote.
Counselor Gollum?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhaas?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Yep.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. You're on a roll.
All right, order number FY twenty-five zero-three-six. City Council upon recommendation of the Mayor Disorga, move that it be ordered that the memorandum of agreement between the City of Greenville and the Greenville Fire and Police Signal Operators Association be approved. Majority vote required.
A second?
This was positively unanimous also.
And any discussion or questions? Okay, let's take a vote.
Counselor Gollub?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock? Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhaas?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Yep.
President, does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Great, all right. So more zoning. Yay, yay, all right, guys, ready? Buckle up.
Oh, yeah, I'm ready.
All right, so I'm, I'm going to ask as we come into some of these because they're confusing, so just making sure that as it's being introduced that you get an explanation of what's being changed and why it might being changed, as, as well as how it came out of committee, I appreciate that.
Yep, and we have a, I think it's going to be a little easier tonight than last month, just, yeah. So we have order number FY two-five dash zero-two-four-point-two. Yes, that's the correct one. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the City Council of Greenfield amend the zoning ordinance, Chapter two hundred, Section two hundred dash four-eight, mixed residential business uses by striking subsection A in its entirety and replacing with language in bold as follows in attached Exhibit A. Amend Section two hundred dash four-eight mixed residential business use of the zoning ordinance to allow first-floor dwellings in mixed-use lots by amending subsection A, so it reads as followed. Where striking, all dwelling units shall be above the first-floor level, the street level which faces the street with the highest traffic use, and adding, first-floor dwelling units shall not be allowed along the street side with the highest traffic use. And further amend the Table of Contents and Index of the Code, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the Code of the City of Greenfield. Majority vote required.
Let's get a second and then-
I'll, I'll second. Second.
Thank you.
Okay, so this one received a unanimous negative recommendation, and if, actually, if there's anyone, if I get the number of votes wrong, please just correct me normally, I'll look at our notes, but since our meeting was last night, I had no notes to go off of yet. But this one, I believe, received a unanimous negative recommendation. The rationale behind that was that there is actually many counselors in UDC who were in support of this, of this in some form, but we felt like we needed to do more diligence because this is in the central commercial district. We needed to address things like a square footage ratio or floor area ratio, secure entrances in common walls, safety lighting, parking sound. One of the other things that came up was having a potential for there to be a handicap-accessible unit is only or granted on the first floor, non-main street facing. So there's just a little more diligence we need to do on this, and the, the changes are substantial, so we felt like that this was a negative recommendation, so we could start again with a well-crafted plan.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion? Counselor Garrett?
So I, I also voted no because it was unanimous, and this was a motion that was part of the package of motions that I initially put forward regarding housing in general. And it was, you know, it's going to sound strange, but it was a pleasure to vote no on this, knowing that we're going to come back with a better version. So I firmly stand by the language as it was written. We need accessible units, this would have been an improvement to the existing code. Right now, you can't have mixed housing and commercial spaces on the first floor of a building, and if we had made the change as written, you would have been able to have a compromise. And I'm excited that everyone on the committee in EDC, and I think the full council, wants to see accessible units, and we will have them on the first floor, but we'll have, instead of a good change, we'll have a better change. And to me, that's how you make compromises, that's how you make progress. And so I, I'm really excited that we're going to go through this progress, process in the way that we are deliberately and with every voice being heard. So I just wanted to thank the rest of the committee and everybody for working on this issue and trying to make it the best version we can.
Thank you, Counselor Minhaas.
Yeah, I think the vote was a example of how collaboration can happen, and we all agreed that accessible housing is definitely a need, and, but also at the same time, how can we merge the two needs for accessible housing while also maintaining a robust commercial district? So this is not the end of it, there's more to come, and that's why we voted no, so we can have something better.
Counselor Gollub?
Why the no vote as opposed to tabling it if we're going to continue to discuss it?
Because we need to make substantial changes to it, and so the changes seem to be too substantial to make to the same piece, so we were just like, let's scrap it and start again and make it really clear, and not potentially have a barrier of having to, the changes be too substantial.
Counselor Toronto?
Also just to add to that is because there are such substantive changes, it would require a new public hearing, so.
And we want a public, we want another round of public hearings on this.
All right, I think it looks like no more comments, so let's move it to vote.
Counselor Gollum?
No.
Counselor Gordon?
No.
Counselor Master Tataro?
No.
Counselor Bullock?
No.
Counselor Perry?
No.
Counselor Healy?
No.
Counselor Brown?
No.
Vice President Garrett?
No.
Counselor Minhaas?
No.
Counselor Toronto?
Nope.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and no.
The motion is defeated unanimously.
All right, back to you, Counselor Bullock.
Okay. Off my notes, I'm on to, okay. Order number FY two-five dash zero-two-five. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the City Council of Greenfield amend the zoning ordinance, Chapter two hundred, Section two hundred dash fourteen, by adding language in bold and by deleting language and strike through as follows in Exhibit A, and further amend the Table of Contents and Index of the Code, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the Code of the City of Greenfield. And what, what is shown in Exhibit A is Section twenty-five C. It strikes medical center slash clinic, including accessory research- It strikes medical center slash clinic, including accessory research, from the list of things that need a special permit, and it re-numbers the rest of the things that need a special permit.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you.
This was also a unanimous no. And, yeah, there just, there wasn't agreement that this, that it was necessary to take this one, medical centers, including clinics, from the list of special permits, especially in the Central Commercial District. There's a desire to keep the Central Commercial District commercial, and, yeah, if the others wanna add.
I've got Counselor Gordon.
Yeah, I'll just add that I believe it received a unanimous negative recommendation from planning board as well.
Counselor Garrett?
And we were unanimous no in case I said no, I didn't say that either, sorry.
Okay, seeing no other discussion, move to vote. Counselor Dolan?
No.
Counselor Gordon?
No.
Counselor Master Tataro?
No.
Counselor Bullock?
No.
Counselor Perry?
Abstain.
Counselor Healy?
No.
Counselor Brown?
No.
Vice President Garrett?
No.
Counselor Minhaus?
No.
Counselor Toronto?
Nope.
Does the president wish to vote? Yes and a vote no. The motion is defeated.
Okay, order number FY-two-five-dash-zero-two-six. The city council moved that it be ordered that the city council of Greenville amend the zoning ordinance, chapter two-hundred, section two-hundred dash seven point one-eight accessory dwelling units, subsection C applicability, paragraph one, by adding the following language in bold, two-hundred dash seven point one-eight accessory dwelling units amended by the city council on May twentieth, twenty-twenty. See applicability, one, an accessory dwelling unit within an accessory dwelling unit attached shall require a site plan review by the planning board prior to construction. As part of the site plan review, the planning board shall determine that the total land area of the parcel submitted for the addition of an accessory dwelling unit shall not be less than one-half point five of an acre. The net acreage of total land in a parcel minus all dwellings, including all proposed accessory dwelling units, internal roads or driveways, or other buildings or developments, shall be considered open space and shall be, shall comprise at least fifty percent of the parcel. All accessory dwelling units shall meet the minimum setback requirement for the district in which it is located. ADUs shall not be used for short-term rentals, and further amends the table of contents and index of the code, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the City of Greenville. Majority vote required.
Do we have a second?
Second.
This received four yeses and one abstention, I believe. Oh, sorry, tell me what it received then. Oh, sorry, four no, yes, four no's and one abstention, sorry. And, so this was a citizens petition that was brought to us, and in November, I requested a legal opinion on this, and we received that legal opinion, and it was in agreement with what I thought was true, that it would be in violation of the impending Affordable Homes Act that comes in, in February, will be Massachusetts state law. So if we were to pass this as written, we would be in direct violation of a section of the Affordable Homes Act. The opinion that we received also recommended that we review our current ordinance to ensure that it complies with the act as passed. So this is not, it's not the guidance from our planning board. I feel like there's been some misinformation about this. This was the citizens petition that was brought to us. Were we, regardless of our feeling, anyone's opinion, or desire for ADUs or not, or opinion of the state regulations, were we to pass this? We would be potentially exposing the town to lawsuits, and I, you know, I do, personally, I feel like it would be reckless to expose us to potential litigation. The, the reason that I voted no on this instead of tabling it or something else is because we have decided to wait until after February second, when the final guidelines come from the state, and then draft a new ordinance to be in compliance with state, along with the necessary adjustments that we wanna make for our, for our town. If we, those are, those are going to be substantial changes, so amending the citizens petition and like, like tabling it and amending it, in my view, does not make sense. So, yeah, I'll leave it at that, and others can add.
Counselor Minhaus?
I'd like to make a motion to table it because I feel like there's been a lot of effort been put into this, but also at the same time, we don't want to be in violation of the law, which is important. So if we just table this and perhaps can come back in a different form when we have some more information from the state, that will, you know, make sure that constituents' concerns are being heard and we're not just voting this away, so they don't have to start all over again.
Was that a motion to table?
Yes.
Then we'll need a second, and there will be discussion once that happens, so just wanna be clear.
Can I make a point of clarity or not when there's a motion?
I need the second if it's gonna stay on the table.
Hold on one second.
So we have a proposed motion to table, do you want me to?
We have a proposed motion on the floor. If there's a second, then there's, the vote to table would be automatic, it's not debatable. So... If we wanna discuss... If you wanna discuss it.
Can I make a point of clarity about what tabling it means for, for members of the council that might not understand the process completely?
Sure.
So if we table this, what happens is failure to act within the required timeframe, which is in early February. So if this gets tabled, it'll be failure to act within the required timeframe. The planning board then must hold another public hearing, and the process is repeated again. And as I stated, this is not in compliance with the state law and needs substantive changes for it to be in compliance. So in my mind, that this would be a waste of time, we need to start fresh, but we would be forced to rehear this again.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we're voting on the motion to table. If you vote yes, the order is tabled. If you vote no, the discussion tonight would continue. On the motion to table, Counselor Dolan?
No.
Counselor Gordon?
No.
Counselor Master Tataro?
No.
Counselor Bullock?
No.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
No.
Counselor Brown?
No.
Vice President Garrett?
No.
Counselor Minhaus?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Nope.
Does the president wish to vote?
No.
The motion fails for lack of a majority. I think Counselor Dolan, you had something to add to the discussion that is now on the floor, is that correct?
I was going to ask a question about what would happen if we tabled, and Counselor Bullock answered that question, and I'm, now that I have the floor, I'm just going to state that I hear the desire from folks in the community to really flesh this out, and I trust that once we have the recommendations from the state, we'll be able to do that.
I appreciate the last sentence of this, where it states, ADUs should not be used for short-term rentals, and I think in our future discussions, that's something that we should continue to consider.
I wanna echo Counselor Dolan's comments a little bit and just say to the public, you know, we, I personally have taken all the comments tonight to heart, we are listening to you, we will very much consider all of the comments, as we can consider a lot of these changes next month about ADUs. So please know that if this doesn't pass tonight, it's not that the entire subject is dead and gone, it's very much still a live conversation.
Before I call, and you, we will have public hearing once this restarts, so just wanna make sure that folks understand that that will be part of the process, and that's a really important part of this process, so I appreciate that. Counselor Bullock?
Yeah, that was a piece of it. So this will start fresh, and we will have a public hearing, whether it's a joint public hearing or between planning and EDC again. And I just wanna remind, I mean, everyone left, but the few of you that are here, that what we craft will have to be in compliance with the Affordable Homes Act. And so we can't craft something that restricts the building of ADUs in over seventy percent of buildable lots in Greenfield like the citizens petition did. That is in, you know, direct opposition to what the Affordable Homes Act did, and, you know, getting legal opinions is costly. I don't wanna do it all the time, but I felt like it was necessary for this. And so we, it's a very serious issue that EDC is considering, and we welcome public comment, public, folks, please come to the public hearing. The conversation that we get to have about this is through email, I got nine phone calls today about ADUs, and so there is a lot of conversation that gets to be had, and unfortunately, we don't get to dictate how public meetings are held, but public comment and public hearing is the time for that. So I welcome that at next month's meeting in February.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote, and I really appreciate folks' comments also about whether or not you believe that the Commonwealth overstepped on this. Unfortunately, we're not in a position to change the state law, so if, and I know folks went and testified, and I think that's a really important part of this process, so keep doing that, keep talking to your legislators, because if there's a flaw, they need to change it, we can't do that with our ordinance. All right, we're gonna call it to a vote. Counselor Dolan?
No.
Counselor Gordon?
No.
Counselor Master Tataro?
No.
Counselor Bullock?
No.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
No.
Counselor Brown?
No.
Vice President Garrett?
No.
Counselor Minhaus?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Nope.
Does the president wish to vote? Yes and no. The motion is defeated by majority.
Okay, order number FY-two-five-dash-zero-two-eight. The city council moved that it be ordered that the city council of Greenville amend zoning ordinance, chapter two-hundred, zoning by adding the following. RB suburban residential and RA urban residential would have no allowance for roosters, no matter the acres, limited chickens would be allowed, ten. RD rural residential would allow chickens and limited roosters on land five acres in size, and further amends the table of contents and index of the code, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the City of Greenfield. Majority vote required.
Do we have a second?
Thank you.
All right.
This was a unanimous negative recommendation. Similarly, I did not get a legal opinion on this one, but I did read the current right-to-farm law multiple times and spoke to a few people, and this is also a citizens petition that would be in violation of our current right-to-farm. We did hold a public hearing on this, there's a lot of sympathy for this, and there's some other ideas on how these type of things could be addressed. And I do, I will have a call with the petitioner tomorrow about withdrawing this, and seeing if the process for, like, remediating the issues within the right-to-farm law has been But yeah, this directly violates the right-to-farm ordinance that we have in place.
Any discussion? Counselor Garrett?
The petitioner was here last month, and he also mentioned to me that there's an issue with our city's charter, having the word chicken in it, which covers all forms of paltry gender expression. Sorry, I love talking about chickens. And so roosters are chickens, right? And so because our charter has that language in it, in addition to the farm bill, which the state ag farm bill, we would have to change the charter to be able to do this as well. And that's, you know, this state takes several years to do this kind of thing, and we have an agricultural commission who has the authority to enforce this sort of thing, so that's hopefully gonna be an avenue in which he can get relief.
Counselor Perry?
And also, there's a neighborhood group, R B six-seven, who's working on a noise ordinance, and I asked them to make sure they address this issue in the noise ordinance, so that might be another way to deal with this, because we do have so much sympathy for the complainants.
Absolutely. I'm sorry, Counselor Dolan and then Counselor Toronto.
Yeah, I just wanna express my sympathy for folks who have roosters waking them up, having struggled with sleep. I just wanna express sympathy and a request to the community to be good neighbors. Thank you.
Counselor Toronto?
I have more of a forum question. I'm seeing RD as a rural residential, when did we change that from RC? Or is that just an error? Because I live in RC, and I live in rural residential. I only know this because when I was doing changes to my home, I had to go to the planning board and go through a whole process to move four feet closer to my side, but I was in the RC district.
Sorry. It's, so I just wanted to say it was what was in the petition, so that's what ended up in the motion, it wasn't a change of, in our planning.
Okay. I just was like, I missed something. Thank you.
Counselor Master Tataro, do you have a comment?
I don't even...
Okay, thank you. I had to use my schoolteacher look.
Yeah.
Which I don't want to order. The video is not visible on camera.
There's no point of order from the public.
Okay, no points of order from the public, thank you.
I just wanna say one thing about this, I just wanna echo what Counselor Dolan just said. Can we just please be good community members? I mean, the fact that it has to come to the council like this, it's a little embarrassing. I mean, ever, like, people have the right to farm, and I get it, honestly, 'cause like, with the cost of eggs being insane, like, go ahead, raise those chickens, but like, just be a little nice, you know? If somebody's had to come multiple times to city government, just work something out with them, you know? Thank you.
Any other comments about chickens or roosters or peacocks?
I won't.
Yes.
So just to let everyone know, we are having technical difficulties. The video Zoom is not working, the audio is working fine, which covers open meeting law. The audio is working fine, which covers open meeting law. And if anyone wants to watch the meeting and see the video, you can go to GCTV's YouTube. They are streaming it with a slight delay. Sorry. Okay.
Okay, I'm glad there's the delay. I, is that like the Super Bowl thing where?
I don't, I don't know. It's like a two or three-second delay.
Okay, no, no order malfunctions. Let's vote. Okay. Counselor Golub?
No.
Counselor Gordon?
No.
Counselor Master Tataro?
No.
Counselor Bullock?
No.
Counselor Perry?
Abstain.
Counselor Healy?
No.
Counselor Brown?
No.
Vice President Garrett?
No, but I'm not gonna crow about it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Counselor Minhaus?
No.
Counselor Toronto?
No.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes and no.
The motion fails by majority. All right, we made it. Now we're on to presentation of petitions and similar papers. There were none. Report of committees. At this time, there were no topics reasonably anticipated. Unfinished business. At the time of posting, there were no topics reasonably anticipated. Same for old business. At the time of posting, no topics reasonably anticipated by the chair. So now we're on to new business, and we have first reading. And that goes to Counselor Toronto.
Transfer 8,000 from Veterans Department ordinary benefits to Veterans Department monument account. Repurpose $53,497 from high school capital building account to replace and upgrade boilers at Greenfield High School. Purchase a fire department ladder truck for an amount not to exceed $1,900,000 with $1,600,000 to be paid from capital stabilization, and $300,000 to be paid from ambulance revolving account.
All done. Counselor?
I have another, a new business.
Okay. Any motions for reconsideration? Okay, and now we move to mo, new business. Counselor Bullock?
I just wanted to note that today, we received an update that we are allowed to use CDBG funding for the Hope Street, Russell Street fencing and sidewalk repair, which for many years has been closed. It's actually the reason why I decided to run for council, was to try to fix that area. So my work here is done. The RFP went out today, and we will have an open sidewalk in the near future. Hopefully, by the spring, the construction will take place, so very exciting. And just a huge thank you to Anna Altman, who did the work to get the funding in place to make this happen.
I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Don't jump on it too quickly. All right, we're gonna have to take a roll call, unfortunately. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? All right. We just adjourned, and it is 9:06.